Well, good morning, everyone. This is a special meeting of the City of Rancho Mirage, so I will call it to order for 11 o'clock. And we are representing the City Council, Library and Observatory Board, Housing Authority Board, and the City Council representing the Redevelopment and Successor Agency. And today is Tuesday, August 16th, 11 o'clock. This is a very short, informal meeting, so we will continue. And I will ask for a flag salute to our illustrious man to my right. Thank you, Isaiah. Now we will go to roll call, Chrissy.
Councilmember Downs?
Here.
Councilmember Smotrich?
Here.
Councilmember Weil?
Here.
Mayor Protim Kite?
Here.
Mayor Townsend?
Here. Next on the agenda is an opportunity for the public comment. This is an opportunity for the public to speak for a maximum of three minutes per speaker. Public comments shall be limited to only those items described on this special meeting notice agenda, Government Code Section 549543A. So I will turn this over to our city clerk. Chrissy, do we have any?
Thank you. So for those participating remotely who have public comments, again, these are comments only on the two items on the agenda. If you're participating remotely, you would want to push star nine or raise hand on Zoom to indicate that you'd like to speak. I did not receive any speaker cards. Anyone in the audience want to speak on either item? Okay, sir. Please come up and state your name.
Yes, I'm Dan Paupers. I've been fortunate to be a resident of Rancho Mirage for 40 years. And I've seen the evolution of this city in the most positive ways. What I wanted to mention is that my belief that whenever we can support at every level of government, the ecological welfare of not only our citizens, but man and womankind, we should do it. And I understand on the agenda, there is an enhancement, I believe, of your contributions toward landscaping and helping out in terms of minimalizing water usage. And I just want you to know, as a resident, I'm all for it. The more you can do to help us out with our environment, the better we are. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Thank you, seeing no one else in the audience and no one raising their hand online.
Very good. I will also say there will be no council comments at this short meeting. So we're going to go right into the action calendar. I'm sorry. That's what I was told. It's in my script. But if you're dying to say something, Richard, I will, you know, recognize you.
I'll pass.
You pass. Steve?
I shall pass as well, Charlie. Thanks.
We'll see. Iris?
Nothing from me today.
Ted?
No, thank you.
Well, there you go. So the script was right. All right, moving on, action calendar. And I'm going to turn this over to the city clerk to present the staff report and handle the public comments. The first action item is number one, adopt joint resolution number 2022. The second on the calendar is consider allocation of additional funds to the turf program. Chrissy?
Yes, so this is item number one. So mayor and council members, Assembly Bill 361 permits legislative bodies subject to the Brown Act to continue holding remote meetings through the end of 2023. In late 2021, the city council adopted a joint resolution permitting remote meetings. In order to continue allowing remote meetings, the city council must reconsider the issue every 30 days. Adopting the proposed resolution would authorize remote meetings for an additional 30 days. And that completes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Chrissy. Next, believe it or not, is a call for council comments. Anybody?
If I, sorry, mayor, first, if I can see if there's any public comments. Oh, I'm sorry, we already did that.
Well, the script says call for comments. Thank you. All right, we have nothing and nothing and nothing. So we'll call for a motion, and I will read that motion. And here it is. Adopt joint resolution number 2022. Next, an order making findings pursuant to Government Code Section 54953 as amended by Assembly Bill 361, and authorizing continued remote teleconference meetings of the city council and affiliated agencies and all other city affiliated Brown Act bodies in accordance with AB 361 during the current state of emergency related to the COVID-19 pandemic. May I have?
I'll say something.
Ah, good, good, good. Please vote.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you, Chrissy. Next is item number two, and I'm going to turn this over to the city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The item before you today is to consider another amendment to our very successful turf rebate program.
Really?
So we're back again. We could not wait till September. So as you know, the city council initiated a partnership with the Coachella Valley Water District to enhance a turf rebate program through the water district that applicants stemming from our city would be able to apply through the water district's program. And then the water district has an incentive, financial incentive, and then the city would add on to that for our community. So as we saw, after the council initiated this program with an initial budget of $500,000, within about a week, we were, had consumed that budget with applications. So at that point, city staff came back to the council and asked for more money. So the city council approved an additional $750,000 to the program, bringing the total up to 1.25 million. And we are back here today in a special meeting because we ran out of money again. So obviously, the program is doing what we want it to do. This is the third time that we've done a turf rebate program through the city. And again, we learned from the first two times that we did this program. So we can't talk about this program without thanking the water district for their support and making it very easy for our community to get these rebates. And really, what they're doing is they're saving water, right? They're removing grass and converting either to an artificial turf that takes no water or to a desertscape that takes very little water. So either way, it's a great program. They're going to save money on their water bill. And most importantly, they're saving water here in the valley. So this program's been widely utilized. It is still very popular. The water district has been great to work with at a staff level. They've been giving us reports. They've been keeping us up to date. They've, are taking some amendments to their board as well for additional budget into this program. I do know that there are some other cities that are serviced by the water district, Coachella Valley Water District, that are also considering some version of this program, kind of seeing the success of it and the state of the drought. Kind of makes sense. So today, what we're asking for is for the council to consider another $750,000 amendment to the budget. That would bring the total budget for the program up to $2 million. If this program and if the council approves this additional $750,000 into the program, in total, the $2 million allocated to this program, if that was all used up by the community, we're looking at approximately a million square feet of turf being removed within our city, which is just fantastic. So we saw with the first half million that we were saving millions of gallons of water every year with the first half million. So what we plan to do is, if this is approved by the water district, is they will continue to accept applications. We will continue to provide the city match. Now, so how the match is working is if you're a residential customer, you get the water district match of $3 plus the city's match of $3, bringing your total rebate to $6 a square foot. You're limited to 10,000 square feet of turf per residential property. If you're a commercial property or an HOA property, the city's reimbursement drops down to $1 a square foot. So we're offering residential customers $3, and then we're offering commercial HOA customers a dollar a square foot reimbursement. So if you're a commercial or HOA account, you'll get the water district's $3, and then you'll get the city's $1 for a total rebate of $4 per square foot. And they have much larger projects. And so the limit on their project size is 25,000 square feet. We obviously are also, for any commercial or HOA project that abuts a regional roadway, they're required to do a landscape architect. And the city is also covering that $6,000, up to $6,000 for the cost of a landscape architect. So we did hear in the past that for, you know, some of our HOAs or commercial properties, that was a little bit of a hurdle. So we wanted to remove that as well. So they're also eligible, continue to be eligible for the city funding up to $6,000 for the cost of that landscape architect. The purpose behind the landscape architect and those plans is so that on our regional roadways, we get a well-thought-out, appropriate, for the community, look and feel to this landscape plan. And then also down the road, if plant material starts to die or is replaced, we have a standard that we can hold that community to if we start to get complaints through our code department. So over time, if that landscaping needs to be refreshed, we refer back to those plans, and that's the standard that the city sets for that project. So instead of waiving that requirement, we thought it would be better to just incentivize it financially where we cover a portion of the costs. So with that, a huge thank you to the Coachella Valley Water District for partnering with us and making this extremely easy for our community. I know we've talked to a couple businesses, and we've had a few residents reach out about how easy the process was to apply online and how seamless it is. Again, the applicants are going to get strict on the backend. The water district is giving the city what we need. And then the water district is going to give them the full rebate. That includes the water district share and the city's share. And then monthly, we are, as a city, providing a reimbursement to the water district for our share of those reimbursement checks. So from a customer interface standpoint, it's a lot easier than what this program was in the past. And I think, you know, with the climate of where we're at, with the drought and where we are as a community, we're seeing a lot of interest in this. I think both because of, you know, people wanting to make the right decisions when it comes to water, but also the financial incentive is more than it's been in the past. And I think that is really motivating people to do these projects. So this additional money, we will continue to work with the water district. And before I go too far, I'd like to call up Victoria Lord. She is the Government and Regional Affairs Manager with the Coachella Valley Water District.
Good morning.
Hi.
Mayor Townsend, council members. It's great to see you guys again. I was just here not but a month ago. I appreciate you guys making the time for the special meeting and considering additional funding to the city's turf rebate program. Firstly, you know, I just want to appreciate the partnership that's been formed with the city as a result of this program. This has definitely opened up lines of communication within the city manager's office with Jessica. And it only, you know, enhances the communication that we were having previously with the city. We've worked with Ryan on multiple occasions. We have a, what we call CVWD Local Impact Committee, which brings together directors of public works and plannings from our city partners and an information sharing session. So I'm glad to see that through this partnership, we continue to work with staff, and it's been fantastic, incredibly easy to work with. So my kudos to everyone involved there. This potential continued investment in the turf rebate program shows a sincere commitment and the city wanting to help their residents and their HOA and commercial properties reach significant water savings. We've heard from applicants that if it were not for the city's additional investment and matching funds, they wouldn't be considering a turf conversion. And especially also the $6,000, up to $6,000 rebate for a landscape architect certainly makes a difference for those larger HOA commercial properties. Hopefully, this additional investment will extend the program for a month or two. You know, as we, I mean, we're happy to run out very quickly, but we'd like to, you know, see this last a little longer, certainly. And I think that's one of the reasons for the $1 match for our HOA and commercial applicants due to large project size. It lets the dollars go a little further. And then lastly, you know, certainly, this potential $2 million program, it's a significant milestone as CVWD continues to work with the other cities within our service areas for the development of a similar program. So this certainly sets the bar quite high. But other cities have reached out and taken note of the program. So I just want to commend the City of Rancho Mirage for their partnership, and thank you for making the program such a great success as well.
Very good. Would you do me a favor and run through how one applies for this? How easy it is to do this?
Certainly. We'll head on over to CVWD.org. And then under the conservation portion of the website, click on rebates. And there you can see residential or commercial HOA, and that'll take you to a separate application portal. We obviously have staff within our water management department that is available and ready to answer any questions that any CVWD customer may have. And so then, please do not tear out any grass prior to getting pre-approval for the program. That is a must. You need to do a pre-site inspection where we have a CVWD staff member come out to your property. And then once you receive approval, you have 90 days to complete the conversion. And then CVWD will come back out for a post-site inspection. Check, check, check. And then you would receive your rebate.
Very good. Thank you. Isaiah, any further comments?
Yeah, I just wanted to note, you know, we've had a few people that have reached out to staff that maybe completed conversion projects prior to the implementation of this program. And they asked if the city would backdate this program to include people that already did conversion projects. And so what we explained to them at the staff level was just that it's not the intent of the program. Obviously, we appreciated their efforts, and they went through the rebate program and did the application at that time. And so this, you know, wasn't a punishment for people that already did conversion projects. Obviously, we've brought these programs in during droughts that the state has been in. So the program is intended to compel new projects to remove turf. But we do appreciate anyone that did a prior conversion project that is saving water. You know, that is ultimately the goal here. So we do appreciate their efforts. But again, this program was not intended to try to go back and reimburse people for previous projects. Other than that, that's really, you know, kind of the only other feedback that staff had received. And again, that was pretty limited to that sort of interaction. There were only a couple people that had questions like that. So we definitely appreciate the community responding to this program and saving some water. And, you know, I think this is just another example of the city being proactive for our community. So with that, staff is available for any questions.
Very good. Thank you very much. Wonderful program. Iris?
Yes, I just had one question, maybe for both of you, both you, Isaiah and Victoria. Is there a cutoff date when this program will be ending? Especially since so many residents do leave in April and May and may not come back for a while.
Yeah, so the way that the application works is as people apply, they're put in the queue. And so, you know, the water district's budget for this program is viewed as a district, so their whole service area, versus our program is viewed just for applicants from our city. And so it's, the time of the program has been dictated by the number of applicants and the square footage of the projects and when we run out of money. Now, someone can still apply if we run out of money. It's just they're only going to be eligible for the water district portion of the rebate. And so, you know, in order to get the city money, they have to apply within a timeline of where it's still available. And with the history of this program, I would tell anyone, get your application in because this money goes fast. Now, they can still apply. If we commit city funds, CVWD absolutely has an active program, and they'll get the CVWD portion. It just wouldn't be the city portion unless the council, at some future point, decided to reinstitute this program.
Okay, so if the city has funds available, when people come back in October or November and they apply, will they still be eligible for some type of rebate?
Yeah, so the city money has no timeline on it. So, you know, if we've gotten through the mad rush, and let's say that the money starts to trickle out now just to a few applicants a month, like it was before, and that money, the city's program money, is still there, then yeah, you know, it'll, they'll get the city's match. Where they wouldn't get the city match is if we've already had enough applicants that took up all the city money. But then they would still be eligible for the water district match.
Okay, thank you.
Very good. I have another question. When you said the $6,000 toward the landscape development?
Yeah, that was me.
How's that work now?
So for our commercial projects that, you know, the easiest example is when you see, you know, the wall of a gated community and you see the turf on the outside of the wall, right? You see that from the roadway. If there is going to be a change to that landscaping, we require a landscape architect to come in and design that project. That is what we're reimbursing, up to $6,000 for those commercial properties.
So that's over and above?
Yes.
Wow.
Yeah.
Unbelievable.
So they'll, they'll get the dollar per square foot match from the city, the $3 from CVWD, in addition to the cost of a landscape architect, up to $6,000 when that requirement exists.
Very good. Thank you. Ted?
This doesn't necessarily pertain. I don't have a question for you. But I do want to make a comment that we are very fortunate as a city to be in this kind of a position, to be able to offer this to our residents. Many times, I have been questioned as to why does the city need to have that large a reserve? What are they going to use it for? They don't need to accumulate that much money. And I reflect back upon the fact that that reserve enabled us to afford the Great Plates Program, which was a lifesaver not only to the vulnerable residents in Rancho Mirage, but it kept alive a number of our restaurants that would not be in business today if we didn't have that reserve. The same is applicable to this program. How fortunate we are as a city that we can afford this kind of a sustainability effort regarding a conservation and make that available to the public. And so I'm just thrilled to be able to, when my turn, when my turn comes up in a moment or so, I look forward to voting in a positive way for the program. Thank you.
Thank you, Ted. Richard?
Charlie, we've talked about number of square foot coverage. How many people does that actually represent? How many residents have applied so far? And what is the ultimate number?
So the number of applicants is going to be dictated by the square foot, square footage of the projects. So there is a cap of 10,000 square feet for a residential property, as an example. So, you know, if a resident came in and said, hey, I've got 15,000 square feet of turf I want to remove, the program is only eligible for the first 10,000 square feet. They can remove the other 5,000 square feet, but they won't get a financial rebate for that. So, you know, if applicants come in, and what we're seeing is, you know, I would say the average residential conversion project is ranging between 1,000 and 2,000 square feet. So if an applicant comes in, we do have a couple cases where a resident has come in with a max 10,000 square feet. So if you get a lot of those, then you're going to be able to get less applicants. But I would say what we're averaging is between 1,000 to 2,000 square feet of turf per application. So on the HOA commercial side, you know, typically that skews a little bit larger because those projects are, they typically have a larger area than a residential parcel.
So best guess, number of residents that have taken out the paperwork so far? Do you have a figure there that?
I've seen the spreadsheet, so give me a minute. Let me see if I can pull it up.
If I may, Isaiah, while you're looking for that information, the, the project area size actually is capped at 10,000 for residential and capped at 25,000 square feet for HOA commercial per project area. So that means that a resident actually could submit front and backyard. If it's 10,000 and 10,000, they just need to submit separate applications. And similar for HOA and commercial areas, we've seen, for instance, Eisenhower Medical Center. They have a few applications in for different areas of their property. But each project area has to be a max of 25,000 or 10,000 for residential. So it's, it's possible to receive more than just 10,000 square feet. You just need to go through the application process twice in tandem, you know, concurrently. But there is the ability for, for more.
Does that mean that an HOA could put one application in for the front of the project and then another one for the side of the project?
That's correct.
Yeah.
Really?
Yeah.
That's amazing.
I think Eisenhower did three applications.
Yes, Eisenhower has multiple.
They had three different zones.
Boy, boy, boy.
And if I also may, forgive me to councilmember Smotrich's question earlier. CVWD's rebate programs run yearly. And so, of course, our water management department closely monitors the budget for each of our conservation programs. And, you know, should there be need for additional funds, we will also similarly go to our board for the approval of additional funds. But there is no time or deadline to submit for, for any of our rebates. They, they operate year-round.
Very good. How you doing, Isaiah?
Okay, the number is almost here.
Yeah, so this is what I get when Jessica is allowed to take a vacation and she's not here. She sent me a nice spreadsheet that had all the numbers on it. There we go.
I'd also like to make an additional plug to give Isaiah some, some time for all of the rebate programs that Coachella Valley Water District offers. Of course, we have for indoors, you can do toilet rebates. We offer up to $100 for residential toilet rebate applications. We also have a washing machine rebate as well. I believe that's between $100 or $200. And similarly to, you know, I believe Edison might also have a washing machine rebate. So therefore, you can match the two rebates, and that also helps your pocketbook. We have rebates available for our HOA and commercial customers as well, from, you know, nozzles, smart irrigation controllers, obviously, turf, toilets as well. We've had like hotels come in and want to upgrade their toilets if they're not water sense, right? Their gallon needs to be 1.28 or less per flush. There are a lot of high-consuming toilets out there still. So we do offer a widespread of rebates in addition to our turf rebates. And in this time of drought, of course, we encourage the city and its residents to take a look or give us a call and see if we can be of any assistance.
All right, so this report is two weeks old. So it is not current, but this is the last one that I could find. So on the HOA commercial side, we had 28 applicants. On the residential side, we have 88 applicants. On the residential side, the smallest square footage is 300 square feet for one applicant. And then we did have two applicants that did the max 10,000. that did the max 10,000 square feet, and everyone else ranges in between those two numbers.
Excellent.
Did you have your question answered?
We'll come back in two more weeks and see.
Yeah, I mean, what's going to be fun for us as staff is, you know, we've done a couple videos through Kai on this topic that we use to promote the program. And I know CVWD is promoting the program as well. But it's going to be fun, kind of at the end of it, to come in and be able to give, you know, actual numbers and say, let's start putting some water savings to this stuff. So, you know, it's been a very successful program, and it's been great for our community.
Boy, boy. And you guys really, really look and dig, dig very deep in all these different things that people can apply for. It's wonderful. It's just wonderful. And with that, Mr. Steve?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I think this sends a remarkably important message to the citizens of the city of Rancho Mirage in a time when conservation is so critically important for all of us. So with a nice, round number that we can all easily remember of $2 million that we're going to spend to help the people of our city and the businesses in our city, find ways to conserve and conserve today, but for years and years and years into the future. So I'm so happy that, that we're able to do this, that we have the resources that allow us to do this. And I hope this also, as I think Isaiah, maybe Victoria, you mentioned this as well, I hope this helps you and the water district in setting an example for other cities in the desert to follow the same pattern. So I think it's pretty clear that we're probably going to vote yes on this today. Thank, thank you for being, being here, Victoria.
My pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Anything else, Victoria?
No, I, I think I covered it all. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. And I'm hoping that you'll vote in favor of the additional funds.
Now, listen, in the next half hour, you come up with another solution of something else. Come on back.
Yeah, I'm always happy to fill in some gap of time. My pleasure. Thank you.
Very good. And with that, we will call for a motion.
I'll be happy to make the motion, Mr. Mayor, that the city council approve a modification to the Rancho Mirage turf rebate program in partnership with the Coachella Valley Water District and approval of an additional $750,000 for a total of $2 million allocated to the program and authorize the city manager or designee to take all further actions and implement the same, including approving, approving and executing all associated agreements approved as to form by the city attorney.
I'll second that.
Very good. We have a second. Please vote.
Motion carries 5-0.
Very good. Then with that, we are going to have no closed sessions. I'm sorry, Steve.
Oh, no, I'm not sorry.
Is there something you want to say, Steve?
No.
You sure? Okay.
The less I say, the better.
Okay. Then with that, Mr. Isaiah, I think we are done. So we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody. And we will see you in, in a full meeting in September. Thank you.